Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, October 29th, 2025, to call the meeting to order. Are there any declaration of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda. Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move on myself, seconded by Counselor Massey, that the Council of Committee of the Whole for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, October 29th, 2025.
Any discussion on the agenda? I'd also like to point out, I just, did we run out of ink? I didn't know Jacques's name was changed to Jacques Mas.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed. Thank you. There are no delegations. We're moving right into staff reports and this Treasury Department, budget planning, and key considerations. Counselor Massey.
I move on myself, seconded by Counselor Mannley.
Yep.
That the Committee of the Whole, that the Committee of the Whole for the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report TR-2025-22, 2026 budget planning and key consideration for information purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report provides an overview of the 2026 budget timeline, and it highlights key factors that will affect the 2026 budget. Staff have already started preliminary work on the budget and anticipate that the draft budget will be ready to circulate to council early to mid-December. This will largely be dependent on when the costs become available. Many allocations and rates only become available towards the end of November, and we feel that it's best to include these in the budget preparation. So there are several considerations to note for 2026. In terms of funding, the township's OSIF allocation will decrease by roughly $74,000. OSIF is formula-based, and there's many factors that affect that allocation. The OMPF and CCBF allocations have not yet been released.
Yes.
Due to changes in market conditions, staff also will be reducing the amount of revenue budgeted from interest, which will also impact our revenue. The Alexandria Lagoon project is underway, with several other large projects planned in the near future. A report on the 2026 capital projects will follow with additional information. In terms of expenses, staffing costs will result in additional budget obligations. This includes wages and benefits. The exact increase for benefits is still unknown, but we are estimating at 9%. Other rates related to salaries have not yet been released. We are still waiting on our updated insurance quote for 2026, but it is estimated to increase, which we'll have to plan for in the budget. Another matter for council consideration is community donation requests. Staff recommend that council consider a donation policy. It would help to ensure that all requests are reviewed fairly and consistently. Due to budgeting constraints, it may not always be possible to accommodate all requests, and this would ensure a transparent process. Staff are now seeking direction from council for the 2026 tax rate increase. This will allow staff to continue to refine the budget before it is presented to council, taking it to consideration the challenges in this report, as well as the capital requests to follow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. 5.25, everybody good? We can go home?
[laughing]
Okay, just kidding. Okay, any questions on that? Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
So, Zoe, you're asking for what you think we would like to keep our...
Taxation.
Taxation after.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. It would be helpful going into it to know roughly what we should be estimating at, so we don't come back with a number that's out of proportion to what council would like to see.
Right. So do we want to discuss that right now, or...
So what's your process here? You're going to be going into...
We'd like to go into capital next, so it might be better, after seeing the capital projects, to maybe prioritize what council is looking for, and then we can start our budget deliberations that way internally.
So you currently don't have, like, if you had everything in there, what their budget is at? Yes, scare me.
I don't have the number yet, but we'd be well into the double digits, which I don't think is council's intention. So with a little bit more feedback, we should be able to bring that number down to something that council will be comfortable with.
Okay.
So right in the double digits, then. Yeah, that's good to know.
Yeah.
We need to cut.
If we just removed Counselor Massey, where would that put us at?
[laughing]
Sorry, if we, or if we add the IE in his name on the thing, how much would that cost?
Be over budget.
Okay, okay, so go ahead.
And with regards to the suggestion to create a donation policy, should we be discussing that now, or...
I mean, I, sure, I think that that would only make sense to do.
Okay.
Do you, like, do you have a specific input to it, or...
Well, no, I think it's a good idea. I mean, the, it could have significant implications, like, for some of the community organizations that we've donated to on a longstanding basis, which, you know, I'm not sure what to think of that. Like, you know, the Glengarry Pioneer Pioneer comes to mind.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily those, those have been, those have become line items that, you know, that we've committed to, and it's the one-offs of, I think, the people coming in.
Like the SPCA that we had some of.
Yeah, or, you know, those kinds of things.
Oh, is that what you're referring to?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. It would be at council discretion what they'd like to, like, analyze each year, but the thought was more so for any requests that come up during the year that council might not consider typically.
Right, okay, no, no, excellent. I'm totally in favor of that.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Massey.
Just on that, though, emergencies happen, though, throughout the year, like, to different organizations, who, to try to box that in in an amount, I don't think it, I think it would be just to...
But it's just a policy, so... Oh, you know, if an emergency happened where something, you know, I'll use the Glengarry Soccer League a few years ago, you know, where, had some financial issues, they, we loaned them money, we got all that money back, you know, on a basis, but that, I think that's, those are the kinds of things that we can, we're still allowed to deal with. It's just, I think for staff is, we get, and, you know, and I see them on my desk quite often, is just request to sponsor something, and, you know, and those get sent to Economic Development, because there is a, there is some money for sponsorships, per se, but it's, I think, more on the, yeah, the larger items. But, yeah, I don't think anyone's wanting to stop our commitments that we currently have.
Okay, all right, that's good, that's good to know. Yeah, and then I have one more question. Just related to us coming up with a, with a number, the, in your opening, you talked about the insurance being estimated at 9%, which is, it's good to have an estimation there. I realize it hasn't come in formally yet, but there are other unknowns that you listed and didn't put an estimation in there, and so that makes it difficult, because if we've got those significant line items at a significant, like, 9, 10, 11% increases, that will impact the budget. And so is there any way we can estimate those, at the very least?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The reason that 9% is included is because we will not have a number for that going into the budget. Our renewal is only in March, so our benefit provider provides us that estimate. We will not have a better estimate going in. So that is a confirmed number that will be used in the budget.
That's fine.
The rest, we can, I can look at what we received last year and estimate roughly what we'd receive. We can also come back to council if there's going to be any significant discrepancies.
Okay, it'd just be nice to have a ballpark, because if the estimates are going to be significant, then we need to take that into account when we give you that number.
Yes, go ahead.
Just thinking, Zoe, is it possible that we could, we could have our, our year-end at, in December or whatever, for insurance as well? Could we look at, look at that, or...
Move the date from March to...
Yeah, just so that we would have this for our budget, that we would know.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not responsible for insurance, but it's definitely something we can look into. I believe we are with the other lower tiers in the county, so I'm not sure how feasible it would be, but I can see that the majority would probably appreciate being in the calendar year cycle.
Yeah, it would make sense, right, that, so that, because we're always guessing, we're always guessing.
Sorry, are we, sorry, are we talking about the corporate insurance policy, or the benefits?
Corporate insurance.
Corporate insurance.
Okay.
Sorry.
You're talking about benefits.
Sorry, 9% was for benefits. Insurance runs through the calendar year. We will receive a quote before budgeting. We have not yet.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Oh, okay. And I just also want to point out to everyone that, you know, today is not actually a budget meeting. We're just, we're taking, we're taking in the information, you know, we'll give them some direction, and then when we get down to the meat of it, when we get to budget meetings, we'll have more information, and we'll be able to, you know, trim some more off, or add whatever that needs to be done once we get, but I think they're just looking for some direction today, so. Okay, so I have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, Counselor Caddell is not here. Could you please grab his...
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, recommended that the Committee of the Whole for the Township of North Glengarry receive staff report TR-2025-23, 2026 capital requests for information discussion purposes only.
Okay, Zoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report highlights the anticipated capital request for 2026. It aims to provide council with feedback, sorry, it aims to receive council feedback on the projects and to prioritize. At this time, the budgeted amounts are still in draft, and they may be changed before budget presentation. So each department will provide an explanation for their projects.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll begin on behalf of Community Services to discuss a few of the capital projects that the department has chosen to prioritize for this discussion today. So if we go facility by facility, I think it might be best to start with the Glengarry Sports Palace. As presented to council earlier this year, we had applied for accessibility funding to upgrade the elevator at the Glengarry Sports Palace. Obviously, as noted to council previously, that elevator is end of life, and its, its equipment has become obsolete, so it will be in need of replacement. So nonetheless, that's been inputted as a capital project for 2026. The total cost of the elevator modernization would be $200,000, and if successful in receiving the accessibility funding, as noted to council previously, we may be eligible to receive up to $60,000 to help offset that cost if successful. So this is one of the priorities that we've built into the capital projects for the Glengarry Sports Palace. Secondary to that, we are also asking for a dehumidifier replacement in the amount of $60,000. This dehumidifier is currently end of life as well, and due to the nature of its system, costs associated to coolant, there's a need to upgrade this system to become more energy-conscious. So therefore, this $60,000 unit would meet the environmental requirements associated to any new upgrades associated to dehumidifier. So this is the second request coming through for the Glengarry Sports Palace. Under the Maxville Sports Complex, we are requesting, again, continued contributions towards the Maxville slab replacement. We would like to see up to $250,000 contributed towards that reserve. However, you know, noting there's a number of priorities, again, that's a number that I think we can leave with council to determine what amount might better fit into the total budget allocation for capital projects, but ideally, we'd be asking for up to $250,000 to support that project. I've also identified, under our priorities, the Maxville Sign project. Ironically, even up to this morning, there's still some working conversations going on to replace the sign on the corner of Fair Street in Maxville. So in the event we are not able to successfully complete the project prior to the end of 2025, we would ask for a carryover amount of $10,000 to support the ongoing work to support the installation of the new sign. In terms of other projects, we would continue to request the allocated amount of $63,500 in capital funding to be dispersed through our Municipal Recreation Association Committee members. Those funds are allocated towards the different names at the community halls and the different recreation associations to support their respective projects and upgrades to their community centers and recreation programs. So overall, those are kind of the main capital projects that are being requested from Community Services at a, at a high scale, but I think it's also important to note a few of the other projects that our department had considered. However, at the discretion of council and in trying to provide a responsible budget, I think it's just important to note that these are some that were considered but are not identified as top priorities for the department. Again, subject to any discussion or alternative viewpoints. The Island Park Tennis Court Renewal Project, as you know, this is something that we had applied for Trillium grant funding earlier this year. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful in receiving the funding to support this project, and when we followed up with Trillium to determine the reasons why, ultimately, it's just, there wasn't enough funding to go around to support the project, despite being a strong application per Trillium. So as such, we would like to commit to continue to seek out grant funding to support this project. It is unfortunate, due to the nature of the, the holes and the kind of tearing in the existing surface, we were not able to operate one side of the court this year, but we're of the opinion that it's beyond patch efforts, that the whole court really needs to be completely resurfaced. So this is a project that, again, we're committed to seeking out other grant opportunities to support. We had previously also asked for additional picnic tables at Island Park in the amount of $10,000. This was not put into the 2025 capital budget, but is, again, something that we may be able to offset in smaller amounts through the operating budget instead of replacing in higher volumes. I think that's something that we can build into the operating budget to support. We also received inquiries this year about netting at the Maxville Sports Complex in the outdoor area that separates the Ball Diamond from the pickleball nets. It was identified that there are some safety concerns with your foul balls flying over from the Ball Diamond and reaching the pickleball and basketball net area. We've done some initial investigations into costs associated to netting, which we believe would probably result in a cost of about $20,000. So we have received quotes to have it professionally installed, but we would like to attempt looking at how we can offset using the existing 2025 operating amounts to purchase materials, and hopefully offset with remaining costs in the 2026 operating budget as well. So again, we're trying to mitigate and look for other opportunities to not burden the 2026 capital requests. Finally, we've also included following discussions during Township Emergency Planning Meetings earlier this year. We identified a gap with there not being an emergency generator at the Maxville Sports Complex. So we have done some early investigations into costs associated to the addition of a generator at the Maxville Sports Complex, and unfortunately, it's not included in your package, but it would probably be in the amount of about $126,000 for a generator at the arena, very similar to the amount associated with the one that was installed at the Glengarry Sports Palace. We have not prioritized this for 2026, again, subject to conversation and discussion with council, only because we would be eligible to apply for funding through the Community Emergency Preparedness Grant once again in 20, for the 2027 stream. We're not eligible because we received the funding to support the installation of the generator at the Glengarry Sports Palace, so we feel this would be a responsible item to hold off on until we're eligible to offset with grant funding as well. And then while I, while I still have an opportunity to discuss other considerations here, we won't be including it within our capital request, but of note for council for our operating budget, we had requested funding to support the, the hiring of a project coordinator to support our economic development marketing efforts through the Rural Ontario Development Grant Funding. So again, we suspect we'll hear back about that in January of 2026. So just a note for council that that would be embedded within our operating budget to help offset the 50/50 grant. So the township portion would likely be approximately $17,500 for a six-month coordinator. And then we would also, in order to support this position and someone coming on, I think it's important that we also provide advertising tools and an increase to our marketing budget as well to support that they have the tools and resources coming in to, to help support them within the role during the timeframe. So we have requested marketing and advertising funds as well through the Rural Ontario Development Grant, again, in a 50/50 amount, requesting $10,000, which could be put towards, you know, videography, it could be put towards advertising, booklets, and that sort of thing. So the township portion would be $5,000 to help offset that 50/50 grant. Just a note for council, so that this is something that we're also trying to build within the operating budget, but not necessarily relevant for capital requests. So subject to any questions, that's kind of an outline of what we're proposing at an, at an early stage for our 2026 capital budget request for Community Services. Subject to any questions.
Thank you. My first question would be, what did we spend in capital? And I'm looking at, we're looking at around $450,000 of capital works, or, sorry, yeah.
Overall, or Stephanie's department?
For Stephanie's department. I think it's just important for us to know what, what we're adding to the, to the overall budget, or what's already embedded in the budget. What's that?
Is that something 200? Did you say that?
No, 450.
It's about five. It's about five, between the GSP, the Maxville, and taking out the Recreation Associations.
Well, yeah, the Recreation Association.
Without them, it's 500,000. 510.
Where, I don't know where you're getting that number.
Because the elevator's 200, dehumidifier's 60.
You're getting 60, 60,000 to help offset the costs, so the...
I'm doing it as a worst case scenario.
Approximately, yeah.
But there's 60,000 for a dehumidifier in there, too.
It's 120.
Right, right, yeah, sorry, I denied the dehumidifier.
The potential reserve for the slab.
Yeah. So what do we...
So last year for Community Services, there was only the Maxville Sports Complex contribution to slab at 130,000, at 120,000, and $10,000 for the Maxville sign.
So that one's transferring, so 120,000, so we're taking, we're looking at a $380,000 increase in capital around, approximately, just throwing numbers.
Yes, I was looking at it as a four for the township, but I can break it down into a...
Well, we're just, I'm just trying to kind of...
Yes, I can do that, too.
Definitely, Mayor, you had your hand up.
Okay, so, so the elevator is 200,000, then?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's 200,000 plus the 60?
No.
It's, so it's 200,000 total, take away the 60, 140.
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's...
If we get it, if we get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we get the 60.
So plan that we don't.
I see what you're saying. Okay, so it could be 200,000, 60, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's prudent taking those ones out of there that you did. I have a question about the netting at the Maxville Sports Complex. The incidents of having both baseball and pickleball being played at the same time, does that happen all the time? Is there that conflict there? I'm trying to imagine that, and it seems that...
But it's not just pickleball, there's basketball there, too, and soccer, the kids are playing on that, that section as well.
There's kids playing there all the time, so we've, yeah, were you part of all those emails that we're going back and forth with? So there definitely is an issue there, so it's something that...
Okay.
Yeah, it's not simply just the night that they play pickleball, and there's, I think, four teams playing here. There used to be one team playing in actual...
Okay, it's the first I hear of it. Okay, if you could put me on those emails, that would be helpful. The, I think it's prudent to, to put something aside for the slab. Have we heard about the funding?
No, through you, Mr. Mayor. We have not received any confirmation of any funding, so at this point, I think, from the Community Services standpoint, we want to continue to seek out new grant opportunities and reapply, and continue to look out for additional funding opportunities, because at this point, it's, it's, I guess, concerning that we haven't received any notice of whether we're successful or not, so I think it's prudent that we continue to look for new funding opportunities.
Might be worth, because usually they notify you, don't they? Might be worth finding out.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. It's, I think, between the transition period of myself coming in and the time that the grant was submitted before my time, there's, there might be, you know, a disconnect between myself and, and the funders, but nonetheless, we'll, we'll follow up with that.
Okay. In any case, I think it's prudent to put something in there, because it's going to cost us one way or the other, and best of it's...
May not be 250, but it's, we need to keep putting money aside, for sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Just on the, you know, on the tennis court, I mean, it's brutal. I mean, it's been, you know, I've lived there, you know, my parents lived at that corner our whole life, and it's been, it was bad back when I was young, you know, so it's been, it's been a long time coming, so if we can continue it down the, you know, Trillium, and I think we, and when you do apply for that grant for Trillium, maybe just let us know, and we can talk with our local MPPs to see if they can help us push something through for that, you know, and any, you know, and I encourage all of staff, anytime we put in anything, you know, put in an application, just let us know, maybe there's somebody that we know, or, you know, Carmen's up at Roma, maybe she's going to see somebody and just to put a plug in for us, or something like that, so. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Massey.
Can I, just a few points I'd like to...
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So the elevator at the Sports Palace, right now, we do have the generator, and the connection is made, everything is running with the generator?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, the generator is fully hooked up and, and working. It's operating right now. Unfortunately, we weren't able to connect the generator, however, to the elevator because of the obsolete design of the current elevator.
It's just the power source, it shouldn't matter. It's just because I was on the board of the GSP, and we did put 120,000, I remember, not too long ago in that elevator, and every two, three years seemed... seemed there was something wrong with that elevator. Like, it's been a bit, bit, the money pit, that thing. Uh, but it seems like we're putting money, 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 money.
Well, that's why we're trying to repair it, yeah, trying to put in a.
But we're not gonna go ahead with that unless we accept that capital expense. Uh, two hundred thousand, okay. And then another thing, too, uh, the same thing with the dehumidifier, it seems like we did, did we not replace that thing or was it in Maxwell we did a few years ago?
The what?
The dehu- dehumidifier.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so for context, we do have two dehumidifiers at the Glengarry Sports Palace. One of them is newer.
Okay.
The one that we're looking to replace, um, is at end of life. So we do require two to successfully operate the ring due to the size of it and the nature of humidity, so that's why this would be the dehumidifier that is original to the building that we need to replace.
Okay, thanks. A- and then I don't like the term end of life thing. If the thing is not working at all anymore, then it's dead. End of life, meaning that it's getting old, but it's still working.
But I, I don't think we wanna get caught with what happened with the chiller, even though the chiller ended before end of life.
Yeah. But it's just that sometimes we're being a little bit too, uh, too careful and too.
But seriously, something that's been in there since nineteen seventy-six.
Oh, yeah, no.
It's.
But I was right, though, we did change the humidifier, but that was the other one.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, and then I got another little thing, uh, it's a very small island park picnic tables for ten thousand. I'd like us to have a little bit more, um, accountability of the park items or all of our items in different departments, because a couple of years ago or last year, I went to the old Alexandria Molding Facility, and there was two brand-new tables that belonged to the park in the yard, and they're probably still there now. And nobody picked them up, so we have to have a traceable, traceability on stuff like that, because.
Yeah, cause I, uh, and that was definitely a problem, uh, a while back when we used to, people would put on something, say, uh, at, I'll just use Alexandria Molding, we're putting on something and come and ask to borrow our picnic tables for, for the day, uh, you know, but yeah, it would be good to maybe have a, a count of what we have and, and.
Well, at least like the number of tables, okay, they're, they're stored here, it's not that long to make there, it's just like, and then.
Good idea.
Uh, yeah, it's pretty, I got more stuff later on, but, uh, yeah.
Well, I can't, I can't wait. Any other, go ahead, Councilor Martin.
Any plans in the near future or in the far future for soccer lights in Maxwell? Because, I mean, it's probably one of the only fields that are on municipal property, and it's not, hasn't been lit. We have three hundred kids playing soccer there every week, and Maxwell Rec has been saving money for fifteen years now, like forty-five thousand dollars towards their project, and it's, if it's gonna be on hold, do we just burn the cash and close the books?
I, I think, because it's through your, I think it has to come through the recreation associations.
Well, it had many times.
But, but then, yeah, I, I know, I'm just gonna. But I wanna counter back to your argument, is that you gave some of that money away for the pickleball.
And at the time, it was, it was expressed that it, doing that did not eliminate this Maxwell Light project when that was done.
Well, I don't.
So it didn't take that off the table, I, I know.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying, but that's a discussion that happened at the, uh, at the.
Well, okay, well then, so we'll have to rec, we'll have to request some, some money through the rec, so that, and we're meeting later this month.
Correct.
Another thing, picnic tables, like, we, we have so many businesses here in Alexandria, why can we not just ask for sponsorships and, and requests? That kind of thing, benches and picnic tables and have businesses.
Our schools, our schools build them, yeah.
Exactly, you know, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of ways to, to, to reduce the cost of this kind of stuff.
Okay, further questions on this portion? Okay, so just to be clear, what, what are we, you know, we're, at this point, we're, again, we, we have a second run at this, so at this point, we're leaving everything that's in there as is, and then if, uh, we get down to the end, go ahead, Councilor Madden.
The, we did one thirty for, uh, for the Maxwell Slab last year, I'm thinking two fifty this year is gonna be a little on the high side, just because this is obviously gonna be tight all the way around. Uh, matching last year, I think, would be pretty damn good. Other than that, the sign is a carryover, so that's nothing new.
So everybody, uh, just, uh, let's kind of get a consensus, everybody, would we be good at one, putting one thirty away, or do we wanna go make it one fifty or?
We can, let's try for one fifty, and then if we can't, then we'll bring it down.
Okay, so put that to one fifty? Sorry, you, you had another comment?
Um, no, I mean, the ele- the, uh, the elevators, I mean, we've talked about it, we kind of need it because it's our emergency facility, we don't have any access, cause it's not connected to the generator right now, so if we have a situation, then we don't have access for those who aren't as able. I, it, me a little bit, but we kind of need to prioritize that a little bit, just in terms of risk. Um, other than that, I think everything else, yeah, dehumidifier, it's end of life. Um, I'm gonna say just as far as grants, obviously, everything we can ask for, we're gonna ask for, cause that's the only way we're gonna get a lot of this done.
Absolutely.
Um, but yeah, I think, uh, I, I think that's about it as far as being able to cut.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, just one little thing, on the, um, generator for Maxwell, I think at the, uh, emergency meeting, we had discussed at least having a, a plug-in. I think that would be.
But I think, though, we're, we're only a couple of years, you know, we're, we're only till twenty twenty-seven and we'll be able to do it properly and not have to waste that money, uh, you know, cause we were successful, uh, this year for, you know, the Sports Palace, so I just rather, cause that's, it's, that'll cost money.
But that, wouldn't that be instead of the community services department, wouldn't that be, uh, would we have an emergency plan or something, could that?
Well, it's just part of the facility, uh, so, that's why.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any further questions? Okay. Uh, who's next?
It would be the fire service, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there we go. So good morning, Mr. Mayor and council. Um, I'll be presenting, uh, just some of the capital items in terms of what the fire department has, um, has, has seen in terms of what's required, uh, in terms of our ten year capital plan. So the, our self-contained breathing apparatus, uh, these units are basically our SCBAs. These units are an essential component in protecting the health and safety of firefighters, providing firefighters with the ability to breathe and communicate in hazardous atmospheres. The fire department is currently inventory of SCBAs has been subject to increasing, uh, failures during routine inspections. Currently, the department owns thirty-eight SCBAs and a hundred and fifty cylinders. Uh, currently, we have four SCBAs that are out of service. The, uh, our current SCBAs are manufactured by MSA Safety and were purchased in, uh, twenty twelve. So the fire department is requesting seven hundred and fifty for replacement of these SCBAs, that is an, a, um, we would have to go through an RFQ to actually determine what the amount, that is a very high amount in terms of, um, we have pushed the, this capital item, uh, over the last, uh, couple of years, just to see how long we've been able to try to push these, uh, SCBAs, uh, as far as we can. Um, I'd be looking to kind of see, getting an RFQ to have an, an i- an idea as to where we sit in terms of, um, the number, so I would say that the seven fifty is, is a high number. Um, in terms of other items, um, it was identified as the firewall in Del Keith. Currently, we would be requesting a hundred thousand dollars, um, for a thirty thousand gallon firewall tank to improve the fire protection service in the rural area of Del Keith, where currently there is an insufficient water supply for fire protection. Um, the previous fire tank that's currently up there is only five thousand gallons, uh, and is, uh, no longer meeting, um, all the requirements. Uh, the replacement of the training prop burning containers, it was again identified through the, uh, ten-year capital plan that, uh, it was up for replacement, so we'd be looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the live burn unit. Uh, the, the live burn unit has been in operation since twenty twelve, there's, where it's been exposed to multiple burns and requires upgrading or replacement. This will ensure that the department's able to continue to meet the requirements and complete all the required firefighter certifications. Uh, airbag, air lifting bags, um, so this is a, uh, rescue equipment, so these bags are utilized for rescue incidents and are beyond the fifteen-year lifespan set out by NFPA nineteen thirty-six. All the current lift, uh, lift bags have been placed out of service across all, all our three stations. The department recommends replacing this rescue tool to ensure we can continue to provide the level of service required for extrication. The recommendation is to purchase just one set, um, of lifting bags versus, uh, times three, where it can be deployed, uh, on one apparatus for all of North Glengarry, rather than, uh, our previous model of having, uh, airbags across all three stations. Uh, and again, as every year, we've been requesting three thousand dollars for capital, um, renovations to all our stations, this, this is the, um, we review every year in terms of the, um, the cancer risk, uh, policy that was established by Ministry of Labor in terms of cancer prevention for, at the station, so, uh, we work towards, um, ensuring that we have, we meet some of those checklists, uh, throughout, uh, the years as, as best as we can, and to me, as council's aware, our fire stations are aging, but we're just trying to make sure that we can keep, uh, meeting those, uh, health and safety requirements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Zoe, same question?
So in twenty twenty-five, the ask was thirty thousand dollars, the only item was the station renovations, whereas in twenty twenty-six, it's one, one million fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, um, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Matt, just wondering about the, uh, you said the, the SCBAs were purchased in twenty twelve. What, what is the lifespan of those, like what, uh?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, typically, they're about ten years, same as our bunker gear, all our bunker gear is subject to a ten-years rotation, whether or not, uh, it's the level of exposure, so we've gone beyond it. Um, to note, uh, also with the SCBAs is that our operating budget currently, uh, we just finished paying, uh, the MSA units off in March, so we currently still have an operating budget set out for it. Um, that's where I would request so that we go through some quotes to see, uh, put an RFQ out there where we can, uh, get an actual factual number to present to council to say, this is how much it's gonna cost, and where we could go through and, and actually say, there would be no change even in operating, in our operating budget in terms of, cause we've been doing this for, since two twelve.
Okay. And you think that seventy-five hundred, or seventy-five thousand is a high number?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I do. Yeah, I would say we would be ranging between at least four fifty to six hundred.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Um, Zoe, they, this, these SBC, uh, SCBAs were on our, uh, on, on the books under long-term debt, is that, is that paid off yet?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the fire chief has just mentioned, they were paid off in March.
Okay, that's what you were referring to.
I do wanna clarify, we only budgeted the operating budget from January to March. We did not budget for the remainder of the year as we knew the grants would be stopped. Um, however, we did include, I believe, a transfer to reserves last year as part of it, to build towards paying for the SCBAs in the future.
So what was the, uh, what would, what amount were we paying, uh, per year, like, cause I know that we, we were in the same kind of position where it's great if we can, you know, plan for it and pay for it when it comes up and then continue planning, but in this case, we've kind of, we, we, we get it and we pay it over a period of almost twelve years.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I will just have to take a quick look to see what we were paying.
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, you and I talked about this before, I think, is there not a possibility of replacing these on an ongoing basis, instead of doing them whole hog all at once, doing, if we got thirty-eight and we plan over, I don't know, say, eight years instead of ten years, you know, and we do nine a year or something? Um, my math doesn't work, four a year, five a year? Um, obviously, a little more controllable in terms of cost, you said that we've got four that are out right now, so we've got thirty-four total. Do we have an indication of, I presume they're not out until they fail a test? Um, but the way they're declining, do we have an anticipation of when we're actually out of spec on all of these?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so, um, our SCBAs are, so the difficult part of changing five at a time is that, uh, it's the interoperability between, uh, the different versions, and there's different standards that are now applied in terms of, uh, the old ones, and there's a new NFPA standard in terms of SCBs of what the requirements are. So once you make a change, uh, in the interoperability between these two, and there is three SCBA companies out there, when a quote comes out, uh, or once an RFQ goes out, who is the successful bidder in terms of, so who, so having two different companies could, there could be a potential issue of having two different type of SCBAs, which wouldn't be recommended in terms of, at a fire scene, we, it, there would be no interoperability between it. Um, in terms of, for example, is this year, uh, and the reason why this came truly to the forefront is that we seeing a cost of twenty thousand dollars for operating just to fix these, uh, devices this year, which, uh, in terms of the, the previous operating budget, is seen about thirty thousand dollars a year for these units, so it's at a point where it's, it, there's no, we're spending more in, in fixing them, uh, than actually, uh, a cost of a, a new one that's, that's leased over or purchased over multitude of years.
What about doing, um, say, uh, a three-year, an RFP for a three-year replacement? Uh, so that we, you know, we sign something with one company, they commit to a price for year one, two, and three, and, you know, say we do, for the sake of round numbers, thirteen, fourteen at a time?
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor, it would be the interoperability between having, um, multiple different versions of SCBAs working at a fire scene would be.
Are they changing these things every year?
No, they're changing them, the different standards, the changing, uh, of the standards would be, if we're operating with the current units, so if we start changing them and we have some firefighters working with units that are from two thousand and twelve, and so where we'd be looking at, you know, I mean, obviously, the health and safety of one firefighter versus the other, who gets the new pack and who doesn't get a new pack, it, it just wouldn't be feasible.
Okay. Councilor Massey?
So basically, Matt, you, um, so if we were repaying the, when we purchased, I remember we were there when we purchased those thirty-eight, whatever, and then we just paid it off now, so basically, in, in the future, if we put a line item, like, uh, like, uh, like, like we do with the landfill, put some money aside every year, it'd be the same thing as repaying a loan, so, you know, like, because I'm sure in ten years you're gonna come back and say, well, these ones are no good anymore, and I accept, like, I understand the, the, the regulations and everything, it's just that, whether we like it or not, it has to be in the, it has to be there at one point, it's just like a, a fleet replacement or something, we're putting money aside for, or being a slab replacement. We have basically no choice to put money aside every year towards that purpose, because it's not like a cherry on top there that you're asking us, it's, it's basic stuff, I think. I think we have basically no choice. It's not as if we're gonna say, uh, I'll go ahead, take the old ones and something happens, we're kinda, but how many, uh, how many do we actually need, though? That's maybe important, too, in the, in the amount.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the amount that we currently have of thirty-eight is, is, would be the minimum amount, uh, in terms of, uh, operating at fire scenes, we see thirty-eight operating almost all times. We are, as council is aware, is, we are a very busy department in terms of these units are utilized on an ongoing basis and they go through rigorous inspection, and this is why, um, it was brought forward. It is a critical item in terms of ensuring that we cannot have a, a pack that's not serviceable anymore, that having a firefighter, you know, uh, go into a inhalation risk environment and, uh, be exposed to something just due to, uh, operations of the SCBA not working correctly, but, um, we have pushed these SCBAs past in terms of, um, we've tried to push them forward in terms of to see, and we've, yeah.
Zoe, do you have a, what number?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, previously, we were budgeting just under thirty thousand dollars a year, uh, however, the number would largely be dependent on what the fire charge. However, the number would largely be dependent on what the fire chief gets as a quote. And it'll also depend on what term we choose to.
To pay it off in.
Exactly, yes.
So how long do you think it would take to get a quote?
Through you, Ms. Mayor, I think, in terms of obtaining a quote, given the fact that we have a procurement policy in place to work through canoe cooperative purchasing, we could get a quote very quickly. In terms of, so there is identified vendors that operate through canoe, which we've, were successful in terms of getting quotes for other capital items such as fire trucks and so forth. But we can obtain a quote through, through canoe, most likely within weeks.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we get that number in front of us before we, before we start making any commitments or moving forward? Let's get a number and then let's see what exactly we're working with in regards to the SCBAs.
Would you like a council report to authorize to go, to start that process?
No, I don't think we need one.
Very good.
Go ahead. Everyone's good with that? Yeah. Okay, so let's move on from the SCBAs. So go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. With regards to the firewall tank? How, how has water been managed in the past that it is now required?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so currently, whenever we see a fire in this area, we shuttle water from a distance from Minard Road Firewell, as well as we would shuttle all the way to Alexandria in terms of from a hydrant from there, which we have three tankers and we call in potentially mutual aid partners. Or we end up going to Van Gogh Hill and utilize a hydrant from Van Gogh Hill. It was identified in terms of through capital that it is a, an item that's in a bad location. It's, it's right at, on top of the hill. It doesn't meet the requirements, a very old cement tank that's, it's not suffice for that area. So we, we'd be looking at the similar tank as on Minard Road for that area.
So follow-up question, so just, and I know this has nothing to do with the budget, but just, so this year, you know, I don't know if council's aware, just about the Dunvegan, what's going on with the, with them purchasing the BASS? Purchasing a water, so go ahead.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of the BASS system that was installed up on Sky Road, as a result, Compass will be installing a thirty thousand gallon tank in Dunvegan to support the fire operation on that site as well as to be able to support fire operations through Northland Gary. So we'll have access, they will be installing this tank across from the Dunvegan Rec Center. So there's a property that's allocated there where this tank is at a zero cost to the township. And ongoing maintenance is at a zero cost other than plowing and just ensuring that the grass is cut around that area. So the tank would be the same, similar tank. It's a fiberglass tank that's installed, looks like a submarine. The longevity on them are, is, is almost, it seems to be indefinite given that type. But it is, it would be a large tank for Dunvegan. So overall, it is something that as a township, we, we should be looking at in terms of other areas. And this is one item that is just brought forward to council to make a decision as to whether or not this year is the right year for it. But long-term wise, it is my recommendation that we have to look at areas in terms of water for more of the northeastern areas of the township, which we don't have hydrants in those areas. Maxville has really changed in terms of having the water in that area. We haven't had, we've had great success actually with the having the water in that area. It's just mostly our northeastern and Glen Robertson areas. So we do have other tanks in Glen Robertson that would be required that, which is in the ten-year capital plan to kind of have these tanks replaced. Thank you.
Okay, so Yak, go ahead, Councilor Kadow.
Just, just to mention in the Del Keith area, northeast, Law Hill, there is, it's outside of the twelve kilometer limit for fire coverage insurance. And a huge area, a tank, a water tank there would be something where there is really nothing else for fire protection in that area and north and east. So just, that's a huge consideration to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Do we have a site picked out for this already?
Through you, Ms. Mayor, yes, it would be at the township location, where it would be at the, at the library, Del Keith Library area.
Okay.
Yeah.
How do we fill it?
Sorry?
How do we fill it?
The, the tank?
Yeah.
Basically, it's, as soon as anything is used, we come back and then we have to shuttle to fill it back up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilor Massey.
Mentioned Minard Road, is that the one we built a few years ago in Glen Sandville?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So that, how many gallons is that one?
Twenty thousand.
Okay, so that's not sufficient for?
Yep, it, it is, it's just the distances in terms of, so currently, we do shuttle that distance. What it is, is in terms of operations, it's just allows us to have more water, which obviously that's.
And the road, you don't want to go too fast, like the road to Glen Sandville to Del Keith is not completely straight to.
Yeah, correct. And it's also to note, Ms. Mayor, is that, yes, we do have a fire protection agreement with Champlain Township, who is, who responds first to that area, so within Del Keith. So it's just important to note that, yes, in terms of fire protection, that, that is the fire protection. We're also dispatched that same area, but that is, some of the coverage would be, Champlain does cover some of that area.
Okay, so I, I, my, my reasoning for bringing up Dunvegan was, you know, that maybe, maybe Dunvegan is this year and, and Del Keith may be twenty twenty-seven project. Just let's say, we're going to be, we're going to be looking for some savings as we go. You know, at this point, again, we can leave it in until we get it down to a number. And, but I think that could be something that we could, you know, make a commitment to. Well, I mean, can't commit another council to something, but I think it's prudent to make, commit it for twenty twenty-seven for, for something. So further comments on that piece? Let's, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just that the Dunvegan one is paid for, right? It's not costing us anything, so.
Yeah, no, I'm just looking at it as a win, as a win in with the fire department, go ahead.
Did this, the hundred thou, is that based on the cost for Dunvegan? Like, do we know that that's what their price tag is?
Through you, Ms. Mayor, typically these tanks at a thirty thousand would range about seventy-five thousand. So then the installation is just, hopefully we would have collaboration with the roads department that would be able to, it's just basically digging a hole and then the installation of it.
Okay. Further questions on the fire capital? Yes, go ahead, Councilor Massey.
Just a question on the next one, the training prop burn container. So it says, this is another one that's been in use since twelve, two thousand twelve. What would the cost be, Matt, to, to just upgrade it? Do you know that cost?
Through you, Ms. Mayor, so again, this item was just brought forward in terms of the ten-year capital plan, in terms of it creeping up on us. We've used this extensively, extensively. Again, it's a shipping container. Can we see upgrades to it? A hundred percent, we can, does it have to be fully replaced? It's something I'd be more than happy to look at in terms of seeing if we could just upgrade certain components inside where the cost would be less than a hundred fifty versus just a full replacement. Ship, luckily now, previously, we've done a lot of work internally versus contracting it out. So that's where, over the years, we've been lucky to have members that, on a department that were welders and so forth, that had the capabilities of doing this. So shipping containers have gone down in price. Whenever we look at, at items like a hundred fifty thousand, that would be a delivery of something that's already pre-built, come in, drop, prepared to go. So I'd be willing to, to review in terms of, to see if there's any cost savings in terms of, even if it's just an allocation to, to upgrade the unit to make sure that we can see a few more years to go forward on it.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, go ahead.
And you mentioned a lot of training at that facility and everything, and we do understand, and you mentioned a few times that we, other townships or other, the city comes in and train there too for a fee. It'd be nice for us to see or the revenue that's generated from that station, like.
Well, it's probably, it's probably in the budget.
Yeah, correct.
Yes, it's probably in the budget, and when we bring back the government's report, we can note that.
Okay, so we'll have something to say, okay?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, further questions or comments? Okay, no, thank you. Yeah.
Just one more on the lift bags, do we know that twenty-five is solid?
Yeah, so through you, Ms. Mayor, yes, quoted amounts have seen, again, the shift would be is, I don't want to see lift bags at every station. I want to see it in one unit, so this is, this would represent the savings, so.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so this is where we are seeing, again, this would be a purchase, hopefully through the canoe purchase group, so where we see a reduced cost.
So if I may, I'm going to say things like that, like that's obviously a necessary, if everything's been placed out of service as far as those, the SCBAs. Let's get some solid numbers and on the wants on the ten-year, let's get some solid numbers to see what is feasible and what we can sort of move along for a year, maybe two, if, if something is, is, is doable. To Councilor Manley's point, if we do look at some upgrading on the, on the burn unit, you know, if we can get that going for another, ideally five years or something, you know, try and be a little, a little more fiscally prudent.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Public Works, probably nothing in there.
You know, I, it's, you won't notice the numbers at all.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's difficult to talk about this without talking about the ten-year capital plan. So really, because our new asset management plan had been due, we really kind of rolled it back and looked far into the future to see how we manage this over time. And one of the major things that you'll notice is a adjustment in strategy for water, sewer, stormwater, and our urban cross-section roads. So what I'm planning is essentially to do one year planning and then one year construction with all of those in, in an urban cross-section with all those services involved. So water, sewer, storm, coordinate with all the utilities. It just, it takes that amount of time to coordinate with hydro and Enbridge and, and those guys. Plus, it's a little bit easier on the budget as well if we're doing this, you know, every two years. So there's a, there's a save up year and then a spending year. At the same time, we have the Main Street, Main Street project seems to be coming to a head. So all of these items, so you'll see there is bridge, not bridge engineering, that one is a little bit different, but road and stormwater engineering, and then down on the water section, there's hydraulic engineering and sewer engineering. So those items, and then there, the next year's budget ask for them, which you don't see in this one, they'd be in the twenty twenty-seven budget, they could be allocated towards Main Street. So we don't have a certain cross-section that's picked. We're still analyzing the different condition levels of the water main, the storm, the sewer, to see which one needs it the most. But generally, the plan is to, you know, do open cut the entire cross-section of an urban street and then redo all the infrastructure down the, down the road so that we're not going and cutting up roads and sidewalks that are deteriorating. Sorry, that are, you know, we, we repave the road and the sidewalk on top and then we find that we've got a water break or something like that, I think. So that's the intention and that's the overall strategy that you'll see change. The next one to talk about is probably the biggest one, so in, in terms of the roads budget, so the Ashfall Reconstruction Program. Council has done very, very well here. So over the last, since I started, I, I, I wind a lot and you listen to me and we did this road reconstruction program and it's performing very well. The, we have only forty-three kilometers left of the low-class bituminous roads. We've done, sorry, I missed the number, but we've, we've completed about thirty to forty percent of our LCB road. So we have four, if we, you know, there's, actually I have a number that there's four million three hundred thousand dollars worth of work left to do to bring all of our low-class bituminous roads back to high class, which is a great achievement. The, and, and I, I really have to thank the counties for this as well. Without their staff and expertise and the collaboration, we wouldn't have reached this, this goal. So having said that, there's also, we, in this budget, I'm suggesting one million one hundred thousand. And that would be primarily hitting Lock Gary Road from the top to the bottom and the last section of concession four from Dorney going east up until it hits the good section. We have repaved some of the, the bridge entrances and where we replaced culverts. Essentially, we've, the roads team goes ahead, so we've, we've been working this year replacing the culverts, getting ready so that the next year, we can be ready to go and they can pave. The reason that we get this stuff done for such a good price and so quickly and, and the counties are so happy to work for us is because we're always ready to go. When it hits the spring, you know, they come and say, okay, who's still working, who, where can we go, that sort of stuff. Northland Gary is always, you can hit our roads anytime, soon as the contract is ready, come and pave our roads. So generally, we're always done by Canada Day and we like to keep that going. Having said all that, if we are having a difficult budget year, it is a section that we can cut back on and our, we're still going to have, we're still going to be improving our road network every, every year. Our, especially because of all the work that we've done and because we have the crack sealing machine. So that crack sealing machine is out there, we're actually, we should be complete today for our crack sealing work for this year. And all the roads that we've repaved and then have been crack sealed have been holding up very well. So we've been able to basically reduce the index, essentially year over year, we have a calculated index that our hardtop roads deteriorate by and we're able to reduce that index for our newly paved roads that we're continuing crack sealing on because we're not seeing the degradation that we were seeing on our other hardtop roads that, that started deteriorating before we had the crack sealing machine. We still have the problem that lots of our hardtop roads, one of the ones that comes to mind is Athol Road. So that was absolutely destroyed by that work on the four seventeen and all the trucks running up and down it. It's another road that needs attention. We may try and, and hit that road in this budget. We still need to go and look at our PCI's, our pavement condition indexes and see if that's the one that needs it. But it is a fairly short section, so we think we can do it. Having said that, Zoe will be quick to tell you as well that we have grant funding from OSIF and CCBF and, you know, all the acronyms that fund only roads, only bridges, only sidewalks and, and that type of infrastructure. So we can save some money on it, but, you know, at, at a certain point, kind of the, the money needs to go towards that type of infrastructure because that's a restriction of that, that funding. And Zoe's a lot better qualified to talk to about that than I am. My message just being that we've done very well. We can reduce there and still keep on improving our network every year. So as long as, and as, as long as we're kind of keeping, we could probably just use the funding amount to, to go and improve those, those roads and still make an improvement if we're having particularly hard year. One of the areas that we really cannot cut back on is the sidewalk reconstruction program. So we've been putting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year during the ten-year capital plan. I'm finding that that capital amount is actually a little bit low to be able to go through all of our sidewalks. I'm finding that that capital amount is actually a little bit low to be able to go through all of our sidewalks. And hopefully, if we can make cross-section adjustments, that, so, you know, putting raised curbs in, in a lot of areas, instead of, uh, um, we have a lot of properties that have a fully depressed, uh, front of their property with a sidewalk in front of it, so a lot of trucks use that for a turning circle. If we go to an actual step-up curb, that can help reduce that a lot, and we can get a lot of better life out of our sidewalks. So, uh, it's an area where there is a lot of potential for liability, a lot of potential for people slipping and falling, and, and, and we do get, we have had claims in the past, so, uh, I, I do not recommend that we cut back on the sidewalk reconstruction program, um, but we're asking for a hundred and fifty thousand for that. Um, the bridges, so we're still waiting on the OSIM reports for twenty-twenty-five. They're done every two years, uh, we know that the seventeenth bridge needs to be reconstructed, and, uh, we do know that, um, Mcfee Bridge also needs reconstructing, so we're carrying, uh, six hundred thousand for those reconstructions, and we're also carrying six, sixty thousand for, uh, bridge engineering. So, that would be taking the OSIM reports that we get at the end of this year. Uh, there's going to be bridges that need to be replaced, and guide rail that needs to be installed, so that would be the detailed designed budget amount for the work that would then take place in twenty-twenty-seven. Makes sense. Uh, gravel road reconstruction program, I really have to give a good shout-out to the roads department, Robbie especially, who is, as of today, our new manager of, uh, transportation, who's shadowing Michelle. So, uh, the roads team, uh, there came up with a, a new way to look at our gravel roads, uh, to go ahead, go around and basically figure out which roads needed the gravel. So, previously, we were at four hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. We had estimated that this year we would come in at, uh, three hundred and seventy, I think it was. We came in at three hundred and ninety-five, still at twenty-five thousand dollars production for what we would normally see, even including for the price increase, because, uh, every year, the gravel gets a little more expensive, you know, we expect to see that from, from our suppliers. Uh, so the, um, uh, we're, we're very happy with, with that, and so we're just, we're budgeting, we came in at three hundred and ninety thousand dollars this year, so we're gonna budget three hundred and ninety-five. That should hopefully account for that, uh, little increase that we see from our suppliers every year. Uh, small culverts program, so this one comes from, uh, we have about three hundred culverts that are less than the four-meter span that makes them count as a, uh, a cross, a structure. And, uh, we estimate that on average, so there's small ones and big ones, uh, on average, it costs us about five thousand dollars to replace a culvert. That's, you know, from a very large culvert to a very, very small culvert, so just doing that math, we're gonna try and do ten, ten per year, and that means within the lifespan of the culvert, every culvert gets replaced. So, uh, that's where that budget number comes from, and that's in-house work. So, where, that, that accounts for, you know, we put our signs up that we need, we block off the road, the fuel for the, the machine, the, um, you know, everything that's associated with, with it, buying the culvert itself, the backfill material, and the asphalt is probably the, the main chunk of that, that work. Uh, and then the facilities, so we do need to get the waterworks department out of the place that we're renting, that, that we're leasing right now, uh, on Ninety Main Street and across to the Raff facility. We're almost there, uh, we're a little bit behind, because we had, we had anticipated doing a lot of the work ourselves over the last winter, but that was a very, very busy winter. We didn't get a moment of peace, and we didn't get to do any of the work.
Do you remember that, huh?
So, uh. They all blur together real, and to be fair, the winter before that, we had a, it was, it was nothing. We had complaints that we weren't getting, uh, you know, there, it wasn't like a normal year from the guys, so. Uh, you know, we really can't predict it, just as soon as I thought I had a handle on it, it's, throws me a, a curveball, so. Um, one of the main asks, so, so a lot of these are just normal, um, one of the main asks is something that I hadn't anticipated before, but the, we use one of the garages, garage doors, if you look on Tobin Street, on the very end, we use that for salt storage. That, uh, obviously, we're trying to get out of that building, uh, but, uh, that, this, that area itself is, can't really be used for, I think this will be the last year that we can possibly use it for salt storage. Uh, so, and we're currently, um, I haven't estimated the number, but we're definitely losing a lot of salt that we're storing in that building, because it's not humidity-controlled, uh, there's a good little chunk of condensed salt-like concrete in the back, um, that we clear out every, every, um, winter, and we're also wasting a lot of time trying to get it out of there. So, we have a very nice loader that is really good, we clear the streets with it, and we should be able to fill out the back of the trucks in, you know, one fell swoop with our loader, but it's too big to get, our loader's too big to get into the small little garage that we've got. So, that's our big capital ask, is, uh, constructing a new, uh, salt dome. Um, two hundred thousand was the upper limit on that, uh, you know, we did, I did a bunch of research, and that was the upper limit on that, um, item that we found. And that would be humidity-controlled with, uh, the lighting and HVAC on the inside, automatic door, um, you know, everything to make sure, and that would be constructed at the.
Where would it go?
Two-six-five Industrial, so it'd be the, that's the new waterworks building.
Pictures.
And, uh.
Rare.
Yep. And then, uh, you know, we'd be covered there for, for, for many years, and, um, our operation, operationally, we would get a lot more efficiency out of it as well, because at the moment, we're having to load that garage five or six times per winter. Uh, as you can imagine, if you're loading salt into a garage during a winter storm, or not during a winter storm, but during a winter day, uh, you can lose some of that material, plus the time of your guys putting this in. A building of this size, we don't mess around with any of that. The truck can basically dump straight into the storage building, as the modern ones are, are meant to do, and every time, they, we'll probably need two fill-ups, which our staff really won't have to be involved in at all. The truck comes up, backs in, pours it in, and off you go. And when we load, the loader goes in, takes one scoop, puts it into the back of the tandem, and, and off we go. The other thing is with the increase, the slight increase with the, um, County Road Twenty-One, does mean that we can get salt from here as well, straight salt. At the two garages, we have salt structures, but most of our material there is mixed grit and salt. So, it does make things a little bit more efficient, makes things cleaner for billing as well. Um, we think it's a good, a good improvement, um, so that was our ask there. Does it matter if I go to fleet before I go to water? Okay. So, the other big thing.
Just go ahead. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the, the dome, you meaning like the traditional domes like the county has? Or did you look at any other structures that could fulfill that thing the same? Because there's nice round things now, cheaper.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, there is, uh, that two hundred thousand looks at a few different structures, and a few of them fit into that category, uh, so the tender would not be, you know, specifying, you give us a dome, it would be, we want a salt storage facility, uh, we want an automatic roll-up door, we want humidity-controlled, we want lighting, uh, et cetera, right? So, they would, you know, and there's a few companies out there, we've looked at other procurements that other townships have done, and so that was a budget we came up with. We wouldn't have anything the size of the county, we're not that big. Uh, but we're doing it a little Mickey Mouse at the moment, needs to be, you know, uh, an efficient operation professional, so.
Okay, so before we go to fleet, I think maybe we should answer some questions, uh, you know, on this section. So, do, do you have the number?
Uh, so, in, through you, Mr. Mayor, including the public works building, did you want to put that first, or?
Uh, yeah, sure, well, I guess we have already, that's the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so through you, Mr. Mayor, last year, the budget was three point three, uh, this year, it's anticipated roughly at two point nine. However, uh, there, there is an increase in fleet to offset that difference.
Okay. Okay, so everything worked out about the same from what you're asking from last year. Okay. Uh, Jeff, uh, Councilor Manley, sorry.
You had, uh, where is it here? Asphalt reconstruction, um, you've got in here one point one, is that the same as last year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, so just looking at our progress that we're making, I reduce that by a hundred thousand.
Okay.
I'm trying to do the same or, or better, but Alf, I'll get to the, I was about to go into fleet, because that's the, the bad news.
Okay, okay, thank you. Further questions on those items at this time? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, well, it, um, you know, talking about the one, the, the, the one point one, uh, for asphalt reconstruction, I, I think we'll have, maybe have to go back to that item when we talk about the Alexandria Main Street, because I've got all kinds of questions about how we're gonna fund that, and, uh, and, and, you know, have we been putting anything aside for that, on that question? Nothing yet.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, not, no, we have not had, set anything aside to this date.
Right, okay.
If, and just using, going to that question, if we have a confirmation that that's what we, that it is going to happen, could we conceivably, I know we always have other places to go, put the entire one point one million into that project?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and feel free to jump in here, Zoe, if I'm off the mark a little bit, she knows this more than, better than me, but, uh, I believe that we can actually put that entire one point one aside. Uh, we also do have a hundred and fifty thousand allocated in this year's budget for the Main Street project, because I was anticipating, uh, you know, jumping in on the design and, and paying for a, a portion of that ourselves. That hasn't eventuated, but, uh, so I would, and that isn't in here, but I would anticipate wanting to bring that forward, uh, to, to this year, although there are other, some other construction items in there. So, uh, essentially, the strategy I'd be going with is, it, it's, it nicely falls into what we would already do, so we could even take all these items, carry it through, and give the county a little bit of time to figure out if they're, you know, if they're proceeding, and, uh, we could also hold off that entire one point one, or just do a portion of the one point one for the really in-need roads, say, just Athol Road, and just, uh, the portions that we've repaved above the culverts, and hold on to it for, for the next year. And I'm very confident that in twenty-twenty-seven, say, the counties are like, nope, I, I don't know if they'll do this, but let's say they're like, nope, I don't want to do this project at all, I'm sure I could do two point two million dollars worth of work in one year to, to catch up, so absolute possibility.
Go subsequent.
Yes, thank you, um, yeah, so, I, I think that, that certainly is something that, that we're gonna need, need to discuss, because I quite agree with you, I think your strategy, uh, for, for dealing with our, our HBC roads, as you call them, has been excellent, and, and we've made a great progress, we don't want to abandon that, but if we have to pause it, then for this, a, and, and I think, you, that this, the Main Street project must go forward, and I think everybody recognizes that, um, it hasn't really been approved at the county level at this point, has it?
No, but I think, uh, you know, to your point, and, and maybe, maybe it's not put, setting aside the whole amount of money, maybe it's, it's setting aside, uh, five hundred thousand, so we continue to do six hundred thousand this year, and then next, because we know in the year that they decide to do it, we can take that entire one point one million and put it in, so, which would be, you know, uh, because we all, this is, uh, you know, it's like, it's kind of like Maxville Water, or the, so, these are a generational, it's a project that, again, we've never seen anything happen on Main Street, and it's to get done, so. Go ahead, uh, sorry, Mike Madden, uh, Councilor Madden was first, and then Councilor Massey.
Pretty much as you guys just said, uh, the hundred and fifty to move forward from this year for the planning for next year, obviously, isn't, it's a carry-forward, so we're not really, uh, talking about that for the most part. I'm, I'm, I'm somewhere in between, I like the idea of planning to do the potential one point one, so we have that in place and ready to go, we have the option of saying, no, put that on hold, then reserve that money, and we have the option of doing the whole thing or half the thing at the time. Uh, so I'm thinking maybe we look at, so you, you said, uh, Lock Gary, and I, to my mind, Lock Gary could be broken into two pieces, sort of forty-three to Masterson, Masterson to two, and then the rest of concession four, Athol Road is a small piece, we could get a number on that. Um, and that way, we've got those as potentials, uh, and then if it comes up that the counties say, yes, go, or we're going to go, rather, then we can decide how much we're gonna hold back, and what we're actually gonna go ahead with. But if we're ready to do those pieces as standalone projects, potentially standalone projects, uh, we'd be in a better position to make a decision, go forward next year. That's, that's my thinking on it.
Yep, good. Councilor Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I must have missed a piece, but if the counties are planning to redo Main Street, which is Highway Thirty-four?
We have, we have commitments of, we're gonna be replacing, obviously, we have to do sidewalk work, but that's, that's on us. We have to, well, you can explain all the, the underground infrastructure, everything is gonna be. So, some of that underground infrastructure would actually come out of the water and sewer, uh, uh, budget, so.
I, I think it would be very similar to what Vaglikil, but in about one-third of the time, to re.
Yes, please.
To rebuild that infrastructure, I think that would be very, uh, smart of us to, uh, to rebuild that infrastructure while they're doing it, because.
That's, that's the bucket.
That's the whole plan.
Okay.
That's the whole plan. It's everything, everything, everything.
Okay, go, Councilor.
Uh, just a question on crack sealing on, on County Road Twenty, like Main Street and Maxville, is it counties?
They're paying us for that, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, so, yes, if there is, uh, sometimes we're requested, I actually don't know if we got requested to do crack sealing on County Road Twenty, uh, that our manager of transportation, both of them have, uh, full trust in them, and they get requests from the county, and if they do, then, uh, we do that for them, and we charge them back.
Okay. It's just there's a significant cracking at the main, Main Street and mechanic, there's a lot of major cracks, I don't know what's gonna.
Maybe we should.
They've already did that, that main manhole, they had to repave around that, and it's pretty significant, so. I see.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering, uh, Tim, you mentioned both concession four, and they've already, they've already put culverts in there, on, on concession, that section of concession four, from Old Millam to, to Dorney. Um, I think we have to go ahead with that, out of that one point one. That, it's part, it's, it's not paved, it's like, it's dug up, and it's, so.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, so that will get paved before the end of the year with a patch from, with back paving, uh, because we want there to be a good, uh. Yeah, base, like, yeah, I guess base for, that we, this, we put an overlay on it. So, we, we already want something underneath, so we don't want any sort of gravel patches.
Right, okay.
When we go, so that, that, that's already, um, in the works. So, yeah, and I think concession four, I would do that one first, just because that's had more culvert replacements, so we kind of want to tie all that together, there's more joints.
Makes sense.
Uh, you know, I'd do that one before I go down to Lock Gary, but.
Yeah, Lock Gary's not as bad as, as the fourth, for sure.
Okay, we can move on to fleet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, I hope everyone's sitting down, so the, the issue that we have with fleet is our tandems. So, we have been doing a good job of getting in there and replacing them, but, uh, we have our two thousand and eights, one of them's eighteen years old, and if we replace, so if we replace, uh, one tandem per year over the next three years, twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight, by the time we replace the third one, it's twenty years old. So, uh, we're budgeting to do, to replace one tandem next year, and I, I don't think that we can push these replacements anymore, I think we need to go and replace the two thousand eight, then the next one, then the next one. Um, just, otherwise, we're gonna get too far behind, and it's, it's, we're already seeing a lot of mechanical problems for them. We've done a little bit more, um, we've asked the foreman to do some, a little bit more accounting, where a lot of these repairs would get kind of bundled in, and so we're trying to break that out, so we can get what the repair costs are per tandem, but we do see them when they come up with a major item, like a radiant. But we do see them when they come up with a major item, like a radiator or something like that. So.
So I'll just, I'll take offense to you saying they're really old because I was on council when we passed, we did, we bought 1 million dollars worth of equipment in one year. And it was, it's a great idea at the time. We did the exact, we replaced all this stuff, but it all got old together. And so, yeah, so not, not the way you want to do planning, that's for sure.
My apologies.
Don't call me old again.
So, and then the other items that we have, we have some pickup trucks that are, you know, the end of their life, they're at 16 years old. The other item that we have in here is for another slip-in water tank. That just makes our gravel operations, sidewalk washing. We got a lot of dust complaints, so that allows us to address that. The slip-in water tank would be new. That's not a replacement, that's just to address complaints essentially. Having said all that, those three units, we also have the, a current winter maintenance tender out because Jill Levac retired this year and he's no longer going to do our sidewalks in Dalkeith and Glen Robinson. And there's a lot of other township facilities that he was doing work at. He was amazing contractor, great pricing. And it's going to be very, very, very difficult to fill that. So that tender's out right now, so we're going to see what the results of that are. If the results of that come back where we can't find some way to clear those sidewalks for as, you know, as little as Jill did, we may want to forego the pickup trucks and the water tank and look at a sidewalk tractor for those areas. Because we are, the MMS puts us at a lot of risk for liability when it comes to sidewalks and it's something that really needs to be closed properly, that needs to be addressed properly, sorry. And the, you know, apart from, we could entertain closing sidewalks, but, you know, to be able to clear it properly, we're going to need, need the equipment. And I think that would be the suggestion. We've reached out to a few places for quotations, so that should get us, 170,000 was the lowest we saw for a good sidewalk tractor. So, you know, putting, if we forego those three items for a year, then that's something that we could do to address it. That isn't Plan A. Plan A is that we get a great, we get a great quote from a contractor and then we're good to go. Our contingency is we'll probably be asking for a sidewalk tractor so we can go and do it and it would just be.
Offsetting.
Yeah. And our, it would be casual staff who would do it. So it's, it would, you know, when it needs to get done, type of deal, not a, you know, a whole new staff member on for, with all the costs that come to that. So, yeah, that's, that's where we are, sitting with fleet. Also mentioned here, the Waterworks Department, we're asking for a.
If we can just jump to fleet, any questions on fleet at this point? Go ahead.
Yes.
Not that we need to get into it, but if we were going with sidewalk tractor, where are we going to store it? How are we going to stock it as far as salt? And how are we getting somebody there to use it? Just, those are minimal concerns and obviously, closing sidewalks would be a whole other discussion. The, I think we've got a total of four pickup trucks that are being asked for here. If I'm not mistaken, one for Waterworks, two for road and one for community services. Waterworks is an additional one, it's not a replacement, correct?
Correct.
And the, to Councillor Massey's point, end of life. Where are we at? Are we falling through the floors on these? Not that I'm suggesting we go that far, but I'm curious how bad we are in terms of condition on these.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, sorry, I've just, I've got the years here. So I have the, we have a hauler, so that's the more expensive one. It's 15 years old. The, what's the tandem? And the fifth, the half-ton work truck is 15 years old as well. The new pickup for Waterworks is requested just because we have been operating for quite a while with essentially one less staff member than Waterworks, than Waterworks actually needed. So we actually filled that role and find that we do need another vehicle to go and do all those operations. Because essentially, what's happening is we'll have, we'll have to kind of sharing and kind of, we're losing a lot of time with them coming back to the water treatment plant to swap pickup trucks. Doesn't affect the tax base because it's off, you know, the fee paid portion. But yeah, we're just finding that now we actually have a full complement of staff, which is great news. We just, we wanted to see if we could make it work with what we had and we couldn't really. We've had to essentially borrow from roads at the moment to make it work. So during the summer, they were borrowing, we had vacations for, you know, Dean McDonald took some vacations. So we used his SUV, which worked and we messed up a lot of the back of it. And then we had, other people went on vacations, they used that one and now they're using one of the pickup trucks that the students would normally use during the summer. So that's really why we're looking for a new pickup truck for the.
I was going to ask about the use of SUVs. If we, if we went with an SUV and we actually got protection for the back of that instead of messing up carpets and, you know, is that something that is feasible, both for water and maybe one or two for roads? Roads, I, I know trucks are the preferred. But if we can look at options like that, I mean, the SUVs for the supervisors seem to have done quite well in terms of initial cost reduction for purchase, but also operation.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's a possibility, I think, for Waterworks. We did have a discussion with them. It does make it difficult to do some of their operations, but, you know, if we were really hard up for budget, it's something that we could, could make work. For, for roads, it's just replacement of what we've got there and it's not really possible, especially because one of the main things that we end up carrying around is the fuel containers. So if you think about what they generally do with them, it's a chainsaw with a fuel container or the whippersnippers. I'm trying to think of Canadian term for them.
Or picking up dead animals that you'd have to put in the.
Yeah.
I mean, if you would like us to use your vehicle just to test it.
Actually, the bikes are great.
Okay. You have any more questions? Any further questions on fleet? Okay, move on to Waterworks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I lost my place here. So a lot of the strategy here, we've already talked about. So you'll see the hydraulic engineering at the start. So there's engineering and this is meant to go with the stormwater and the road engineering to essentially replace an urban cross-section of road. Let me, sorry. And I don't think there really needs to be much more said about that. So essentially, what you would see in the off-year is about $600,000 to $700,000 allocated, depending on the project, towards an urban cross-section replacement for water and sewer. We do need to refine that number a bit. We did very well on the Dominion Street replacement. We're not asking for that in this budget, but essentially, the plan would be for urban cross-sections, do a planning year. We're looking at $100,000 hydraulic engineering and these are, I think that there's going to be efficiencies if I'm putting out a tender for engineering services and I'm putting all these items into one. But this is essentially what it costs to do this engineering as individuals. So I am anticipating there may be some efficiencies there, but I'm just trying to, trying to pick a number for the budget. So I have 300,000 to address nonlinear water assets. So for 2026, this would be a high lift pump. So one of those has gave us some fairly strong warning signs this year. So we're, we're budgeting for it for next year. We also have $60,000 for just process equipment refurbishments. This is a yearly item that we always see. So VFDs, UV disinfection, you know, chemical feeders and filtration components. We also have $20,000 in there for control equipment. So that's us just going through one by one each of the, each of the stations and upgrading the skater there to make sure that we stay in line with the current technology. In fact, this year, most of that, most of those funds went to refreshing the computer system because I guess Microsoft has an update and so we need to have a, we need to have the proper operating system to run the new, new system. So that's just keeping, keeping in top of that and making sure that we have some resilience to cyber attack at those, those facilities. Then we've got hydrant and valve replacements that we always do. So we always budget $30,000 a year for replacing hydrants and valves as we go. Generally, they're tacked on to the larger projects that we do, but we want to do, we want to continue those in the off-years as well because we're always going around, we'll test valves. Often the valves won't turn and they're, they're due for replacement. So that's something that we generally do mostly in-house, but we do, you know, we hire a backhoe to come and work with our crew and then the, the cost of the actual, the new fire hydrant or the new valve, what have you. For wastewater, we're asking for a small sum of 15 million dollars. So that's the first year of the two-year Alexandria Lagoon project. We anticipate spending about a third of the total project cost. The total project cost is 38 million. And we have spent a good portion of that this year, getting ready so where we can hit the ground running in 2026. We anticipate bringing something to council in early 2026 with the completion of the tender. So, you know, a small ask there. Most of that obviously is coming from the, the Ontario government to fund that project where we got that grant, which is fantastic. There's no capital expenditures beyond, beyond the lagoons for, that are planned for next year. But there are, in that Alexandria Lagoon project, there are some addition, there is some additional work that the consultant is doing to look at the distribution of the, and the sewage pumping stations within Alexandria, just in terms of engineering and planning that, that was allowed for in the grant. For the Maxville Lagoon, we're carrying 50,000 to complete that EA and really, we anticipate that being ready in the spring to midsummer. And then the, the big part of that, so we had hoped that we'd get that a little bit earlier. That would have been if, if they were okay with us just going to a twice yearly discharge, which unfortunately, they were not. So we're going to carry that a little bit further and get a proper capital recommendation to see what we need to, to increase our sewer capacity there. That's it for Waterworks. I can jump on to landfill? No questions?
Go ahead.
You said carry the 50, is that an additional 50 or are we carrying 50 from this year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's an additional 50,000, yes. But there will, I think there will be some unspent from this year because it was just a budget amount. We worked with, with EBB who really have just unit rates so that we can, you know, and they're spending that depending on what the ministry is asking them for. So, you know, there's going to be some unspent from this year. So essentially, once that's completed, once they've done their completed billing for this year, there should be some extra there which would be used to fund that, that 50. And then essentially topped up to 50 in the, in the year. For the landfills?
Just a, another question?
With this additional 50,000, are we going to have a number of what, actual number of what it's going to cost to get the lagoon functional?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. An actual number is, an engineer will always dodge that question. But yes, that's the plan.
Complete the environmental assessment?
It essentially gets us to the same stage that we were in 2017 with the Alexandria Lagoon, where we have an EA completed and we can go to, we can go to detailed design. It's also something that you can use to go and get funding. So that was the stage that we were at before ACOM went and completed the detailed design for the Alexandria Lagoons. We'll be in a similar situation where our recommendation would probably be to go ahead with it, some detailed design and then you're in a good place to go and get funding from a level of government. But hopefully, the federal government kicks in some money because it's really their requirements, not the Ontario requirements that are causing these capital expenditures, really.
Okay.
Next. So the last one is landfill. So landfill, we're only asking for our typical amounts. So 60,000 is requested to maintain regulatory, regulatory compliance. And that really is a bucket of money that we use to complete whatever requests come from the Ministry of Environment based on the reports that come through. So typically, it's a certain amount each year. 60,000 is normally the amount that, that is spent. We also do leak check hauling for the Alexandria closed landfill site and we do need to replace some landfill monitoring wells. We also have landfill cover material expenses. So we're trying to reduce that cover material liability, essentially. That is in the millions. I'm not quite sure what the, the actual number is, but we've been able to secure some material from Cornwall and we are also taking material from projects in, from, that SDNG performs as well as our own. This, these funds, the 50,000 for landfill cover material may not be spent on landfill cover of material itself. It may be spent on testing to make sure the cover material meets our requirements. Constructing, this year, we spent a lot of it on constructing a road to make sure that we can get the cover to material to where it get, where it means to get to instead of being, instead of the trucks, trucks getting bogged halfway down. And, and then this is across all of our landfill sites. So we do have Dunvegan, Alexandria, Apple Hill, and they all have requirements, fairly, fairly large, fairly stringent requirements from the Ministry of Environment to manage those closed sites, including our open one at Glen Robinson.
Okay, thank you. So we're at that point right now, I believe, that we want to come up with a number? No. Yeah.
The, the Main Street project, I'm, I'm just going to ask a question that's going to relate to our debt capacity because we're going to have another, well, 15 million dollars on the books, right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, we won't have to take out the full 15 million in debt because it is going to be offset by the province. So we're most likely looking at 3.3 and that's very preliminary for this year. We might also look into offsetting it with reserves.
Yeah, we do have reserves there.
Yeah, we do. Oh, I see, okay.
So that's something, again, that budget that we can, you know, come up with, yeah, a detailed plan on payment and how we want to go about doing it.
Okay, but our total portion is 15?
No, through you, Mr. Mayor. The 15 million is the total portion required. About 10.9 million will be offset by the province's grant.
I think our total for the entire project is somewhere in the 9 million?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we're looking at a little bit closer to 10 million right now. However, it'll be largely dependent on what the actual cost of the project is. But the whole project, we're only looking at about 10 million.
Oh, about 10?
In financing.
Oh, I see, okay.
We've just already cut 5 million off. Definitely.
So, so, so the 15 million is just total anticipated just for the first year? Okay, 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 okay. All right. But in, in terms of debt capacity, like that's what I'm, that's where I'm going with this. Because at the end of the day, you know, whatever we take from reserves, that's fine. But it, I don't know how much is in there.
No, no, that's what we're, yeah. But can you, maybe if, uh, maybe had a separate report at the next meeting, could you bring a report on debt capacity?
Yeah, that would, well, that would be great because it was just going to feed into my question about the Max or the, the Alexandria Main Street project. Are we anticipating be able to fund, being able to fund that through our existing budget? Or is there, or do you anticipate that we're going to need to take on some debt?
Yeah, I think we probably, as you said, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, if I might, I think it'd be a comment like the detailed plan outlining. There's different funding sources, obviously there's, there's taxation, uh, there's user fees we could use, there's reserves, and then there's debt capacity borrowing. So, uh, we could lay it all out and you can, you can decide because they all have financial implications. Decide which, which works best in the context of how much we actually have to spend, which we don't know at this point, but we will know going forward once the detailed design is approved by everybody and it goes out for tender and we know how much. So as part of that, a plan will come back saying we need to fund this much. And here, here's the options and you guys can, council can decide how best you want to do in the context of the financial constraints.
Okay, so that'll be a discussion for another day. Doesn't really need to impact today then in terms of.
But I think it's, uh, to bring back a report on the ARL that, uh, like what we have committed currently to debt and how much debt we have, uh, you know, for contextual purposes in the context of the budget, but going forward in terms of the Main Street, I think is, is good as well.
Great, thank you.
If we, because the Main Street project is going to be a combination of, uh, water, wastewater and infrastructure, right? So two different baskets of money. Obviously the Lagoon project is water, wastewater. Does, is there a differentiation between debt capacity in one versus the other? Is it all just one number for the municipality overall?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it, it's, the township itself has a, an annual payment limit that we cannot exceed. It does not matter whether or not it's water, wastewater, or if it's roads or what have you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to get out of here, uh, by noon. I have some things that I have to take care of. I know we still have one more report, so I would like to go around and see what everyone's hoping. For, I can start. You know, we've been very good in the past to keep our, our taxation, uh, you know, down. And definitely during, uh, the COVID years, we, we, you know, we saw lots of rises in costs. And so, you know, having said that, I would be comfortable, uh, most comfortable between five and, uh, and six percent. I don't know if that's enough, but, uh, I, you know, if it's not enough, I'm, you know, look, I'm willing, if, we got to get things done, I'm, you know, I'm willing to look at it. But ideally that's what I would like to see between five and six percent.
Uh, yeah, I, I think, I think we'll probably, I, I'm certainly in, in the same ballpark there. I think we'll probably, you know, need, need to go six, I, I would think, in order to, to be able to, to manage things. But it would be nice if we didn't have to go over that.
Anybody different?
No, I'm five or six.
Everyone in, go ahead.
Just to put this into context, I'm, I'm looking at ideally no more than seven, but at seven percent, it equates to about $525,000. Like that's what people get freaked out about the percentages. But at one percent equaling about $75,000, you know, we're looking at half a million dollar increase. So, I mean, if we got to do it, we got to do it. It's, it's, we got to remember that there's a dollar value attached to that percentage as well. And I think a lot that gets lost.
Just to your point, I think, yeah, is, is we come in, you know, come in, but just maybe we indicate where you've cut, obviously, where, and, you know, and then that's, that's up to council too. You know, that's our job to either put, add in or, or do, or, or decrease. But, you know, I think top end, uh, so, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I, I know five to seven is more likely, but I'd like it to see if we could get it closer to come some three, between three and five. I'd be.
It's going to be impossible. Just.
We'd, we'd have to adjust our.
I, I think we've been low balling, like the last few years, we've been pretty low on our taxes and maybe that's catching up to us a bit. Look at North Dundas had to go, what, 17% last year? Yeah. We don't want that to happen in the near future, you know?
We've got to, we've got to keep up with.
Six percent and if we have to go seven percent, it, it's not a huge, it's a cup of coffee a day. You know, not even that to per household as far as, because we're, if we're only talking 40% of the total, your total tax bill is township. So when people see that and they add that to their total tax, we're only responsible for about 40% of that. So calculating.
Go ahead. Final comment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, there's been a lot of good feedback here and, and from council and we appreciate that. We've got really, you've got a flavor of kind of what the, uh, what especially in terms of the capital projects are. As Zoe said, those numbers, a lot of them aren't finalized. They're going to maybe change a little bit as, as we get closer in the year. So we'll take all the information we've got back today, create a really good report outlining, bringing back something back in the context of, of the percentages that council talked today. That'll include, you know, within that parameter, what's in, what's out? And then you can go through it in detail and say, you know, yeah, we can do it in real time. If you add this, it's going to mean this. If you take that out, it's going to mean that. Uh, we'll have some firm numbers. So, uh, on behalf of the staff, thank you for the, for the feedback. I think we're in good shape, um, to bring back something, uh, uh, kind of a, a first draft of everything knit together that Zoe's going to put together, uh, for December. And then we'll come back in January to, to kind of mull it over and finish it. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so I have a motion, uh, that staff receives the report, capital request for information purposes only. All those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, and next report we have is, uh, oh, we have a few reports, so we're gonna, uh, so Fire Department.
Do you want me to read the motion?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, move on myself, seconded by Councilor Madden, uh, that the committee of the whole receives staff report number FD 2025-06, Fire Department Duty Shift Pilot Program Review for Information Purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a report to bring back to council in terms of the pilot program that was developed. That brought, that was brought forward to council in January of 2025. So the program was initiated in February 2025 as part of the efforts to meet the growing service demands and improve operational efficiencies. The pilot project introduced two shifts available to the Fire Department, current volunteer members, Monday to Friday from eight to four. As part of the pilot program, the on-duty shift was responsible for regular maintenance of apparatus, fire prevention activities, and responding to incidents. Since implementation, there's been 344 available shifts, of which 159 shifts were scheduled. The pilot program enhanced our department's maintenance program for the equipment and apparatus and the duty shift that completed all the weekly and monthly maintenance requirements. This meant that the evening and weekend requirements for other members were decreased. The on-duty shift also assisted our fire prevention division inspections, door-to-door campaigns, and school programs. Lastly, the pilot program has provided our department the ability to continue to meet our service requirements for incidents response during daytime hours of Monday to Friday, where we've seen, um, a decrease of available volunteer members. Uh, should there be any questions from council in terms of the program, I'd be free to, to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just, uh, if you could please explain the, uh, your little graph there. I'm looking at it and I'm not quite understanding it.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So the graph just represented just in terms of, um, we want to outline, um, because the responsibilities of the duty shift also is not just response, um, to incidents. So that's where we just want to outline how many incidents were actually firefighters were responding during that timeframe. So, um, some of the numbers have shifted a little bit in terms of for October and so forth. So what we want to take, outline as well as to see is, and we continue to track that, is, um, is the increase in terms of, um, the personnel that have been available to, uh, take part in these duty shifts. Obviously, eight to four, most people have, uh, regular jobs. So we, you know, we've seen a participation of about, probably about five to seven members that are available to take part in this program. This is where, whenever we look at the 344 shifts that were available and only 159 shifts were taken at that time, um, it seems low. However, just in that period, it's allowing us to at least see what the, what we're able to achieve in terms of, um, the maintenance and door-to-door and the, just that increase alone, what it's provided department has been outstanding and has been, in my opinion, a great success, uh, of a pilot program. In terms of it being a pilot, obviously I'd be recommended council to move forward with it in 2026 in terms of, um, continuing to this, this program because we've seen such a great benefit in terms of the maintenance. Uh, we've seen decrease in our maintenance, uh, of getting third parties to come out and actually have to do, let's say, hose testing. This is able to be done internally where we've seen high, high costs of, you know, uh, about $12,000 in terms of hose testing. So now we can do this internally. So there's, there's some hidden savings that we're not going to, that we can't see upfront. But in terms of, uh, the availability and response, it allows, there's less of a owner, um, I guess, in terms of our volunteers, the responsibilities and to employers that have to see their, you know, their employees leave to go and help their community and, you know, in somewhat of a volunteer capacity. But, um, in terms of small calls such as medical, CO, um, alarms, fire alarms and so forth, our duty shift has been able to respond and, uh, cover off those without that responsibility of, of, um, our volunteers having to respond. So where we're going to, you know, you see 20 some people respond versus now we could respond with a, a crew two plus, uh, uh, you know, myself and a, a district chief. So the numbers, we're able to really allocate those more efficiently.
Okay, uh, thank you. But in terms of this graph, like, so what does the 10 mean and the three mean?
Shifts, duty shifts and then, and then how many calls there were during those.
Correct, so from an eight to four, from eight to four in February, we've seen three calls in terms of from that time period. And then.
They were called out?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay. I, I see, okay, I, I get it, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I was going to ask one more question, yeah. Uh, and what does this program expect, this, this, what is the cost of this pilot?
So in terms of, um, of salary, there's not really an increase in terms of, over the years, of, of operational, um, budget, in terms of how we're able to balance it off, in terms of from our maintenance costs that were, we're already paying volunteers to come in after hours, weekends, and so forth. So, and that was across three stations. So now this duty shift actually completes this work from eight to four, where the owners is not on volunteers, which we had to pay their hourly salary. We're also seeing a much more in-depth maintenance program on our vehicles, which is extremely important, um, which is in long term, is going to allow our fleet to be in that much better condition, uh, throughout the years and to make sure that we keep up on that maintenance. So we're, we're not going to be coming and saying, hey, you know, um, we have, we haven't been maintaining our vehicles in, in proper condition, which in some retrospect, previously, when volunteers come in for one hour and do maintenance, it's not sufficient for what's required. So, um, I'm very pleased in, in what we've been able to achieve and very happy. And, and that's the thing, we, I could say honestly, we haven't been filling the two positions every day. But we are still achieving everything that we need to achieve. So in some sense, it's somewhat of a savings as well because we're not filling, but we're still achieving all our maintenance requirements.
I will say that, uh, I've been sitting at home during a day shift. I'm not like sitting, like doing nothing, I was doing something. Okay, so I was watching TV during one day and my, you know, my phone went off to tell me that there's an incident and within 30 seconds, there was already a, a response team going by to a medical, uh, appointment. So I, I, I think, I think we'll see maybe, you know, a marginal increase maybe in, in, in costs on one side, but then a decrease on costs on the other side, I, I would anticipate. So, go ahead.
Okay. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just out of curiosity, um, non-staffed, like those eight to four shifts that don't get picked up, have you got numbers for the callouts on those? I'm just curious, sort of as a comparison.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd have to run the, the data in terms of, um, a comparison in terms of what we're missing, if, if those are not filled, I, I would have to compile that data.
Yeah, would you please just, just basically put another little thing on that, that chart? I'd just be really curious to see the numbers.
Sure, certainly.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
And as far as maintenance hours, I like the idea that you got a shift where somebody's coming in. Like if they're going in for two hours, half of that time to set up and then clean up. You get one hour, but you spend it twice as much. So you've got an eight-hour shift, you're setting up, doing a good maintenance. It's a, it's a good.
Further questions or comments on that? Okay, good. So I, I guess, um, going into 2026, it's, I don't know, we, I, maybe that's at budget time, which, I mean, if it doesn't really have budgeting implications, but it's to make that a, a permanent program for 2027. So it's, at some point we got to stop saying it's pilot or it's what we're trying to do. And, uh, I do, I do think, uh, in a discussion with you that maybe if people knew that it was going to be for the whole year, that they may, we may see a better uptick of people that'll commit to, uh, to doing it.
Certainly, it's in that, that is somewhat of the feedback is that there's just an uncertainty of, of somebody doesn't want to leave their job to go to, um, to, to something that's potentially just a pilot. So, um, that's kind of the feedback that I, we received some, some, from some of our members. So we're lucky with the members that have come forward and, and done this pilot project. And I think it's been a great success, so. With other municipalities actually contacting us to see, uh, and inquiring about what we're doing and because they're seeing the same issues across the board.
Trying to get people out during the day, so. You had a follow-up question?
Just out of curiosity, if we, and I, I don't know, but if we have somebody who ends up leaving their job to do this, do we run into an issue where we end up with a full-time staff and we end up with benefits and all kinds of other stuff that drives up our cost on this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it would just be depending of how we post the job. And the job is, is, um, it's just volunteer hours that they need to sign up. So not at this time, it would, it would not be a, a permanent or part-time position.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, down under, uh, other business, 2026 and future conferences.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, this follows up on a discussion we had at a council meeting very recently. You're right, if you want to leave, the conference policy and process is the same, we'll, we'll, we'll move on. Or if you want us to look at, bring council back some other options in terms of how you want to handle that. So it's up to, uh, you let us know what you want to do.
Questions before I say anything? So, uh, currently our, our processes that, uh, you know, we can attend, uh, the, there are basically four major conferences. I know not everybody goes to every conference, but, um, it, that, that's what we're allowing. And I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that we stick with that same policy. Secondly, uh, policy that if, you know, if, uh, if you cancel a conference or don't go, that I, I believe that the taxpayers shouldn't be responsible for that, that that should be a responsibility of, uh, of the person who doesn't go. Uh, unless it's, uh, you know, a death or sickness or something comes up, uh, you know, then, then, then that's not the case. But, uh, I think that should be part of the, the policy. Um, I, I don't know that there was anything else. Anybody have, uh, anything else they want to add to that? Okay.
Do you, do you want us to?
Yeah.
Put something together and bring it back for your review? Okay, we'll do, thank you.
Great. No. Uh, request for temporary space, name Vincent DePaul. Yeah, I, 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 you know, talked actually to a few community members who watched the, uh, the meeting. And, you know, we're wondering, you know, what kind of, you know, what are they looking for? Uh, you know, speaking with Tim, I think we got his email today. You know, I'm wondering if some of this problem would go, part of the problem would go away if we had the large pickup, uh, item in. the large pickup, uh, item in our next contract. Um, Tim, maybe you wanna speak to that first?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, I've done a little bit of digging, I'm trying to meet with the director of public works for Hawksbury, so they have quite an impressive, um, garbage contract and, uh, large item pickup program, uh, and I, you know, uh, most of this is not confirmed because I haven't met with them yet, uh, but talking with residents and talking with the contractor who performs it in that area, uh, they have some kind of arrangement where the, uh, on your pickup day, um, you know, every, every few months, I think it's, uh, like, two, two months out of the summer for your pickup area, uh, the contractor will come by and pick up two large items, maximum of two, so, you know, a couch and a mattress or, or something like that, and so it's all integrated into the program. Uh, the real issue I see with the large item pickup program, this year, we have been trying to run our large item pickup program, but we've had issues with the technology and the payment, they changed, uh, there was some legislation which changed how, um, uh, the, so, you know, the, the credit card stuff would work online, so, uh, and then we'd, while we're doing that, we're looking for a contractor who could take it up because we didn't have the rest of anymore. Uh, so, it looks like the best option is to integrate this into an overall garbage collection contract. Um, other municipalities have the issue when they do a big pickup day, is that it can cost into the hundreds of thousands of dollars with just the vast quantity that can be put, and there's no encouragement at all for recycling or reusing, uh, because it's just, well, I'm just gonna wait for that day, collect up all my stuff, my garage full of materials, and then all of it will go to the dump on a day, which, um, you know, it's a great way of cleaning up the community, but it's very expensive. So, uh, I think the, the program in Hawksbury is a good, uh, pilot and, uh, you know, if, if council wants to see that sort of thing, I can, uh, go and talk to that director and see if we can get some pricing on it and, uh, what that would look like. The other advantages that they have is they went to, um, garbage bin totes, so the, the hard plastic, I think they're a hundred and seventy-five liter totes. So, this also alleviates a little bit that larger item pickup, because one of our issues is that everything that you put out in North Glengarry has to go into a bag. So, if it is particularly heavy or if it is sharp in, in some, or, you know, we still, you don't wanna be putting sharps into there, but if you have, say, uh, a broken plate or, or something like that, that really can't go into your, into our garbage because the garbage man's gonna cut his hands when he puts that into the back of the truck. So, there is obviously a huge cost associated with that because you need to procure those and bring them to the residents and, and that type of thing. Uh, but it's a very good program considering that this has come up, it's, it's a concern that, you know, I have a concern that the, uh, volunteer societies are being used by people, you know, are in...
Dump their stuff.
Yeah, and, and not just in North Glengarry, not, you know, and then where, you know, they're footing a bunch of the bill because they're doing their volunteer hours and they're driving to the landfill and that sort of stuff, and then we're footing the bill in that, it's using up our landfill capacity and we do not wanna, we don't wanna open a new landfill and where, we won't, whether we would ever get permission to do that or not, um, and it's a very useful asset for us for soil management for, uh, recycling programs. So, there's a concern with using up our landfill capacity too quickly, and, uh, you know, if it's something that council's interested in, then we'll prioritize, uh, you know, investigating these programs and, uh, in light of this sort of hidden, you know, it's sort of this hidden cost that the township's bearing and that, uh, volunteer societies are, are bearing, um, you know, that can be taken into account when looking at the cost-benefit analysis of implementing a new, uh, garbage pickup contract with hard totes, whether the hard totes actually help with the large item pickup program or not, that, that's something I'd also investigate. This is really just anecdotal information that I've gotten, um, so, but it's something I'd go and investigate and should be considered.
Okay. So, go ahead, just, do, go ahead.
I'm gonna say, we're, we're going well beyond helping Saint Vincent de Paul at this point. I'm gonna suggest maybe we try and arrange something with them at the beginning of December, sit down, have a chat with them, take a look at their facility, understand, like, actually looking at it, and maybe make some recommendations that we had a little bit of a chat offline the other night. Um, my schedule right now, I'm looking at the beginning of December, uh, for the ability to be able to do that. And that's, I did have contact back.
Can we do that in your hands to?
Yeah. I'll see what we can set something up. I had contact back yesterday and...
A few of us would definitely go, maybe Tim could attend and just to meet with them and see what we can, you know, how, you know, some options. I, I mean, I, I think one of them is basically that until they get their capacity lower is to just not accept any, any, any materials.
And this is it. I think it's a, a combination of us understanding, but also helping manage expectations, right?
I look forward to you setting that up. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, wanted to mention that, uh, uh, last meeting, I regretted that I didn't speak out, I agreed with, uh, Deputy Mayor Williams about, uh, if we start being a, a dumping place for extra capacity, it's gonna build and build and build. It's not, it wouldn't be helpful to them, I don't believe, or certainly not.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll say, just to clarify, there, I don't think there's any ask for storage. The real ask was for a space to be able to offer things for free, so basically somewhere for people to come and get things. And that's, I don't know that we necessarily have that right now, but again, I think to sit down and have a conversation, manage expectations, understand fully what it is, uh, I think that's, for me, that's next step.
So, the village bonfire thing is off the table still? Okay.
Okay, okay. One, one thing is, is the awareness of what, what they have in there, because, I mean, their problem is they're, they're reading through, they're only putting stuff out that's, that's good, uh, clothing or, or good donations. They weed through it and, and it's the waste that, so it's, it's more getting the word out that they're looking for materials that you would use if, if you were in that situation.
It's weird what people think that...
No, exactly, yeah.
You know, your garbage isn't necessary, somebody else's...
The other day, I was wearing a suit coat and a tie that I got from, from Saint Vincent de Paul, and it, if I'd have paid the price, they were asking, would it cost me three bucks? Three bucks, a suit, a suit coat for two bucks. And it was, it still had a laundry tag on it, like it was a good, clean outfit. I bought two of them. I was dropping stuff off downstairs, a guy came down, he said, whoa, and showing his buddy, look at the, I got a jacket for the wedding this weekend, look, two bucks upstairs. So, I went up, I took a look and I couldn't believe the shape of some of this stuff. So, people avoid the store, they just, huh, I don't wanna get caught shopping at Saint Vincent de Paul, but it's good, it's, the stuff they put out is good. What they're looking for, that they're dumping is stuff that, like, so, it's to get stuff out, they need it, it's, it supports the food bank, the money they make supports the food bank. But when you're sorting, if you're bringing something, sort it out before you bring it and, and don't, don't pile on, they don't need the extra. And, and part of it is, is advertising and, like, it's more than just an email or a Facebook page, because a lot of people that need it can't afford to have a computer, you know? So, it's just finding different ways to let people know there's some good quality stuff there, if you wanna go and take a look, but, you know, it's, it's status stuff, I guess, I don't know, people just stay away from it. Uh, apparently, they've stopped picking up big stuff, the furniture. The truck they have now is smaller, unfortunately, the pure-later truck has gone past its life. But I'm proud to say it went almost twenty-four years. It was a twenty-four-year-old truck before they dumped it, so, good maintenance on the pure-later side of things.
Yeah, it's too bad they just couldn't get things on time. Sorry, what? I, I, I was just, I was just thinking in my head. Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, yeah, now, pure-later guy's gonna watch this and I'm gonna, anyways, forget it. Okay, uh, so that's great. So, um, you'll set up a meeting. Let's, uh, we'll quickly go through our matters of standing committees, uh, raison d'art, conservation authority, any updates?
We were, we got a preliminary meeting last October, uh, beginning of the month to work on our pre-budget, and then we're waking on a big announcement apparently from the Minister of Environment or something.
Okay.
That was supposed to happen last Friday morning, but it's been postponed, so I don't know what they have in mind, so, which is, next meeting, December.
Okay, thank you. Maxwell Manor?
Uh, Maxwell Manor has, uh, they have acquired a new finance manager they were looking for, trying to fill that position. Uh, they're right now searching for a new CEO, and, uh, catch the ace, almost one point nine million, so get your tickets.
I, they would have picked, if they would have picked mine, I would not have won, I don't think, because I picked the same box that they did, so, thank you.
So, it's getting up there, it's a real...
You can buy those online. Go ahead, do it, and make sure you go to the, when you put in the, the charity?
Number sixteen.
You put in number sixteen for Maxwell Manor.
And just to add, the weekly last week was eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so even if you don't win the big one, it's a pretty good...
Okay, uh, Glengarry Memorial Museum.
Okay, they hosted a great number of events this, uh, this summer. Uh, the Curia went through at least sixteen events that they had hosted, but including, they had a mu, uh, movie night, Music Under the Stars, which was a fundraiser for the Manor. Uh, their fall festival had one hundred, uh, six hundred and fifty visitors, which it was really well-attended. I went to that, and this year I also attended the, uh, the eighteen-twelve reenactment, and it was one of the best ones I've seen in, in the three or four that I've attended. It was, they had a, a big camp set up, they had a, a great, a good number of volunteers doing the enactment, and it was a pretty good show, so...
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Glengarry Archives, uh, we have a meeting this evening at, uh, five PM, uh, so, um, no update there till, uh, next meeting. Arts, Culture and Heritage?
Yeah, not much of an update. You've kind of seen all the, the stuff that we've been doing or whatever, I think. Um, we will have the community grants will be, are due on, by Friday, so we'll be dealing with that for our December meeting, so...
Okay, thank you. Uh, County Council, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just looking through the agenda here. Uh, one interesting thing, we, the County Council had a delegation from, uh, the C, CAO of Glengarry Memorial Hospital, Robert Albert Hughes, and he did a, a wonderful presentation, like, he really represented, um, the, the hospital well in terms of describing capital plans for upgrades over the next number of years. It's gonna take years and years and years for it to happen, but he did a great job, uh, was, was well-received by County Council. Um, I, I, I just wanna briefly update, uh, this group on, uh, my last Roma meeting. At my last Roma meeting, it was put on the table, um, the, Jeff, who sits on the County Education Committee, or chairs it rather, uh, knows about this and, um, but, uh, Roma has decided to take on a proactive advocacy role with regards to, um, school closures and the potential removal of the moratorium on school closures, uh, and because if that happens, uh, it, it will again have huge consequences, uh, for particular regions across Ontario, especially rural Ontario, and so they're gonna be taking a proactive role, which is excellent. They'll be working with, um, the Community School Alliance, uh, who are the group that probably have the biggest voice, but probably not a big enough voice in order to be able to impact this issue with the government like it needs to be impacted, because, uh, if there's gonna be a, even thinking of removing that moratorium, there has to be some consultation with communities that may be affected, and so Roma will really, will really be able to amplify that voice. So, I was really pleased, um, at that last meeting where this was, this was taken on and, and, and they will be representing interests across rural Ontario.
Okay, thank you. Friends of the Trails, any update? No update? Uh, Community Development Committee, uh, so we've been meeting regularly. Um, the big item i, is the subcommittee for, uh, to discuss Alexandria upgrades, which Councilor, um, Madden is the chair of, so I don't know if you wanna maybe speak to that for a second?
Um, yeah, basically, we're working towards, um, coming up with some marketing and basically smart steps towards promoting, uh, the area in general, considering the development that's coming and is imminent, um, and I'm gonna say we're probably due for another one soon, uh, which we'll have to have a talk about scheduling.
And, uh, last evening, a few members of that committee and myself met with Minor Hockey. Looks like, I think, we're all getting on to the same page and, uh, you know, hoping for a, a good outcome for that. Uh, Rural Affairs, I don't, was there been a meeting? No meeting? Okay. Uh, notice of motion, uh, next committee of the whole slated for April twenty-six at three PM. Uh, obviously, that can move up at any time if we, again, have some items that need long discussions, so, uh, and, uh, motion to adjourn. Uh, anything, any other, nothing else to be brought up? Okay. Motion to adjourn, Council Madden.
Move by myself, seconded by Council Martin. There be no further business discussed, meeting is adjourned at twelve twenty-three PM.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. Uh, thank you, uh, to staff for your reports, uh, coming forward. It's good to get that information and get the ideas flowing for council and giving us some expectations, uh, and thank you to council for your questions today, and thank you for the public who, uh, joined us, uh, today. So, everybody have a great rest of your week.